To the July 24, 2017, regular city council. Please rise to pledge allegiance.
Yeah, they're very good.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Mary's not here, she called in. She kinda said she wasn't gonna be here last time. She's outta town at a wedding. Mike Kramer's not here. He said he wouldn't be here tonight. And I was advised that Lynn Ladner, our city manager, went home sick today. So she will not be here either.
I move the...
Excuse both Mike and Mary.
I'll support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
July 10, 2017.
I had a...I talked to Lisa. There were some name spellings regarding the West End that I provided corrected spellings for, and the motion on page 15 should be a failed motion as opposed to a carried motion.
I have a correction.
Herb.
On page five, the top third, Councilmember Weddell stated that before the closed session, there will be a roll call vote, not after.
Before the closed session.
And on page 14, top third after the number three, said if you don't like the response, you shouldn't have come back for a second bite of the apple, not the table. And in that same sentence, my name is misspelled, should have just one D. Thank you, that's all I have.
I have two.
Go, Joe.
Page four, after the sentence at the top, she further stated one of the disagreements are lifestyle drugs. I would like to add to the minutes. Councilmember Rizzi asked if lifestyle drugs meant Cialis, AKA Viagra. I want that noted, please. And then also on page 15, bottom paragraph where it states, he further stated as long as we're not getting milked by the city attorney's office, I just want the minutes to reflect what my actual statement was, and that is, as long as you're staying under the retainer and we're not getting milked here, period, taxpayers are not getting milked, end quote. That was all I had, thank you.
Okay. Maggie?
I just had a couple grammatical changes. On page three, one, two, three, the fourth line from the bottom, it says council member Kurtzwell stated asked, I think maybe stated, should be crossed out. On page seven, it's in the middle of the page, and it's on the left-hand side, instead of every got audited, it should be ever got audited. And on page 12, again, it's in the middle of the page, except it's on the right-hand side. I believe that the spelling of the word aired tonight about a conflict of interest, and she aired, and I think the correct spelling, it's erred, it's E-R-R-E-D. I mean, I think it sounds like air, and then you just add an E-D, but I think the correct tense is erred. That's all I have.
Okay.
I move to accept the minutes as amended.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Approval of the bills? None?
A couple questions, please.
Good.
I do want to...Lynn's not here tonight, but I do want to bring to attention, when I was looking at the revenue report, the city, we get a revenue report once a month, I don't know who else reads it, but one thing that I did notice on the first line was the real property taxes, that we had that budgeted for about 3.4 million, and year-to-date on 6/30 was 3.3 million. So we're off a little bit there in terms of our revenue. Building permits, we're doing pretty good on. State shared revenue, I'm a little bit curious as to why we had an increase there, that's a good thing. So we did have some fluctuations beyond our original budget. I think the one that concerns me the most is the real property tax. And then on, I'm just bringing this to council's attention, the next one is on the expenditure report. On the expenditure report, this was a little bit bothersome, is expenditures for administration were originally budgeted for 1.2 million, and year-to-date, we were about 1.4 million. So we were a little bit over budget there, and sort of wanted to bring that to council's attention also. So I think it's important, I, like I said, I don't know if anybody else reads these reports, but I think it's important to stay on top of revenue and expenditures, particularly when we have the budget problems that we have. Thank you.
I just wanted to make one comment.
Thank you.
Harvey first.
Oh. Easy.
He was quicker.
I was, I was looking at the same two reports, and these are, of course, unaudited numbers, but they do reflect the ledgers at the end of the year. Our revenues were in excess of $422,708 from what we budgeted, and our expenditures, we over expended by $9,716. So that's a very comfortable balance going into our audit, and it looks like we performed very well over the year. Thank you. Go on.
Yeah, just a clarity on that property tax. It was couched as 3.4 million and 3.3 million. It's actually that, if you read the whole number, there's, it's only 31,000 difference, not 100,000, so.
Mr. Mayor, respond?
Yes?
Yes. In response, I would take issue with Weddell here. The issue is, is that the major source of revenue for the city is coming from real property taxes. So any fluctuation in the number-one component of revenue for the city is of a concern. It doesn't matter whether it's 10,000, or 30,000, or 50,000. Real property taxes are about the largest component of revenue for the city, and they are the most critical revenue component to keep your eye on. So if we're missing the forecast, even if it's by about 30,000, it's still something that I think from a budget and forecasting standpoint, we need to keep on top of.
I'll respond to that.
Harvey?
Yeah, that's correct. And if you look at the numbers, and if you look at the last number, the collection was 99.10% accomplished. So the bidding on that, or the projection on that, was pretty darn close.
It's a difference of opinion.
Yep. We noted both of you.
Still amiss.
Right. Anybody have anything else? Okay. Approval of the agenda? I don't have anything, Lynn's not here, so.
Remove the agenda.
One second. Anyone?
We can go home.
Who wants to second the agenda?
I'll second.
I got a comment. I'm just concerned with the, the vote for the planning commission appointment. I would prefer having a full body here when we make an appointment like that.
Are you asking to have it removed from the agenda?
Yeah, I would like us to postpone until we have a full, full quorum.
If that's a motion, I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed?
No.
So I make a motion that we approve the agenda as amended.
Second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
No.
Okay.
So is that postponed? I didn't hear.
Yes.
Yes.
So number one off new business will be the next meeting. Public comment. I was worried Carl, he showed up. And I mean that a good way.
Can you hear me? Is it okay? It didn't work the last time. Very good. Just roar it a little bit. Carl Richards, 390 Lennox. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. Just try to, try to keep it short, but as two main subjects, but I might go a little bit long on one item. Anyway, the historical society is moving along, and some of you may have seen our latest quarterly report, okay? But they handed them out, they didn't put them in the mail this time. And I just wanted to call your attention to our Depot Day celebration. We have it listed as the 6th of September, and that's a mistake, that's incorrect, it's the 9th of September. But the dates and times on the inside of the page are correct. Enjoying this to you, okay? We, O'Conne and Gary Wickersham are chair and co-chairman of our Depot Day Committee coming up, and they're doing a very nice job. We need some more crafters for our midway area, you know? And everybody can, it can come late, two days before is fine if you want to sign up, and it's $15 entry fee, which is pretty reasonable. And I'm looking forward to a good weekend, I hope. Hope we all can have good weather, and we can all enjoy it. Next item I want to bring up, last council meeting, okay? I got the notes here, and I made my own highlights of it, regarding the change of the industrial zoning to our M1 from F1 residential, no, that's wrong, light industrial from the West End Development Company. Okay, I gotta, I've gotta commend Mr. Avante for his evaluation of the situation, and I've gotta make mention of John. You hit the nail on the head perfectly, okay? You said, "I want to take a position," where I want more information before we can look at a decision. You just didn't want to discuss it. You said, "I want to take a position that we get the right information." Okay, well, that's what I want to give you, is some more information, because I'm not unfamiliar with that property. The big thing, as far as I'm concerned, is 1.8 million. I don't believe it. I go along with what the assessed valuation was. But Mr. Schaefer agrees that a mistake at that time was made, okay? And blah, blah, blah. But anyway, I can't call these guys liars, okay? Because there's some facts they couldn't possibly have known anyway, okay? But everything they do know is a long ways from the whole truth about that piece of land, okay? There's an aquifer that runs underneath that, and some of it goes into Yerkes Drain, just a little ways to the south, okay? But the most of it just keeps on going across Dixboro underground and joins up with Yerkes over in Livingston County, about 16 to 20 feet down below ground level. Just make mention of it. None of these developers, and I'm gonna give you an example here, and just a little bit more, ask for an underground hydrological survey, hydrogeology survey of the property, okay? If they did, and the planning, HRC doesn't provide it for them, if they don't provide it, they don't know it, okay? Anyway, there's other factors, and John, you were exactly right when you hit the nail on the head, you gotta get all the truth and everything known, and I'm giving you something, okay? And not criticizing anybody else, but the facts weren't given to you, and I hope they come up with a nice architectural plan that nobody's done, nobody's come up with a suitable futuristic design for a three, three-building complex on that property that would fit beautifully, where you could have three, 18, 24, and 36,000-foot square buildings and all joining together with a walkway and all focused on us. I guarantee you build it, and somebody will come. Somebody will come to rent that building. The notion that, and that property should be built on, but the delusion that you can build houses on there is madness, okay? Just plain madness, okay? They don't know, they don't live here. Anyway, I'm just letting you know this, okay, for fact, when it comes back to you in September. And I certainly hope that this one gentleman, I can't read this, even though I highlighted, I can't, I can't see it that well. Said that they need an architectural plan, which they do, okay? And none has been forthcoming. Okay, an example, I said I'd give you an example. Up there on the north end, northeast end of town, Eagle Crest, adjacent to Eagle Heights, and just north of the Knolls, which we're all familiar with, okay? I talked to the president of the homeowners association, I would say three years ago, close to it, and he said, "The last four units in Eagle Crest should never have been built, because they flooded all the time, there's too much water." Now, you're talking about high ground, okay? But Adler knew this, when he, when he, he knew this, and that's why he bailed out, and didn't want, and he didn't want to buy the other property where the Knolls is today, okay? And it's an unusual situation, because geologically, you have a, a sand dome, you have a sand dome underground that draws water from elevation of, at Lafayette and Street, 52 feet in the air. The only thing you possibly do, make water go uphill, is a sand dome underground. Anyway, and that piece of land is right next to the lift station, which we have today at the end of that development. I'm just letting you know that, okay? But they informed me that those units should never have been built, and Adler knew it when he, when he finished it off. So there's more information that you should have to draw on. Okay, gentlemen, thank you very much.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
Bob, Chief Kennedy, and Bob Martin. Doug Cook, 25701 McCory Lane, that's South Lyon, I really live in Lyon Township, so I'm...We put on the car show, the Lake Street Cruisin'. What we would like to do is do a big show, we're thinking of doing it next year before you have the paperwork that I'm referring to here, an all-day classic car show, similar to what they do in Milford, you know, have that Milford Day Show, usually in September. And we thought, you know, we've got six years under our belt here with the monthly shows, and so we thought we would do something on the main street of, you know, Pontiac Trail and Lake Street, four corners, kind of get the other businesses involved over in that area. They're, they're kind of, a little bit out of the loop when we do ours on, on Lake and Wells, but they, they get some, you know, if they stay open late, and of course, the businesses on Lake Street benefit. So we're thinking of doing, but the reason we want to get this out now is because we, you know, did do it next year, we have to start this year to, you know, get sponsorships and people lined up, and we want to do some food truck stuff that's explained in here. And so we kind of want to get kind of a, your grace or blessings to go forward, even though we won't have the insurance, but we will have, we'll use really our insurance and probably a rider on that insurance that we use for our weekly, monthly shows. So that will, you know, that'll happen, but we can't, you know, obviously get that ahead of time, you know, that can only be done prior to the actual show date. But in, in theory, we want to get an okay that you folks would be okay with this, so we can kind of move forward and, and put some pieces together and...
Make a plan, firm date, and move forward with it.
Right.
And I've been talking with a lot of the car clubs and car people around town and outside of the area, and they're all for it. They were, they reminisced about the old days with the Cowtown Cruisers that put it on, and we want to do it in town this time, or they were doing it on outskirts, and, you know, to benefit the community and the business owners and, you know, bring the revenue in. And it's a Saturday as well, so it'd be a, I think, we think it'd be a great day for everyone to come downtown and have a ball.
I think that's a great idea. We've been talking about trying to enhance our events downtown. This is a, it's already a successful program on the Wednesday nights. Like I suggested, as long as you make sure there's not a Michigan game that day, I think we're golden.
Yeah, true, true. Well, we're kind of tentatively, we're looking at, if you, on this proposal that we have for you, looking at like the 28th of July, I mean...
Would that replace the...
No, that would be in addition to the Wednesday.
Okay, that's what I was wondering.
Yeah, that Wednesday before would be Lake Street and then the car show that Saturday.
Right.
And it's kind of between some bigger shows. Louisville is a big show, and then Columbus is a big show, so it's kind of right in the middle of it, so not everybody's out of town to go to those shows. So I think that's ours.
And also with doing it Saturday, we don't, we're not running into Bakers, because they have that big Sunday show. Sunday would be a, a good day to do it, but a lot of people go up there, so. But we, the, we figured that we would start the event around 7 o'clock, ending time would be about 4:00, the total duration of the time would probably be 6:00 to 6:00, the setup and breakdown. And the, the area that we are looking at is, on Pontiac Trail would be Liberty to Whipple, from Pontiac Trail to Wells, and then that little half-block to the alley that runs behind Grand Trunk and, and Draft Street. Just so that would leave, so the funeral home would have access, and Norm's would have access, and things like that. And in that small area is where we thought we would put food trucks. We would have a DJ, probably this Paul Pete, who does ours currently, and, you know, we would have all the necessary porta-johns and trash receptacles and so on and so forth.
Bob wants to say something.
Step forward there, sir. Bob Donahue. A lot of the businesses have been talking to the Lake Street Cruisin' folks, and they're excited about this potential for possibly having that show. The Pontiac Trail or the Lafayette Street people really would like to cash in, so to speak, and have been begging the car show to expand, but I think this is wise to, that they kind of test, you know, one opportunity for next year. And of course, they know that they have to get with Lloyd, you know, check out all the traffic perspective and the closures and everything with Lloyd before this happens, so. And the Downtown Development Authority is excited at the possibility of this as well.
Personally, I think it's a really, I know there's a lot of concerns, but it's personally, to me, a very good idea. When I, I think I talked to you guys before, and it was like years ago when the Cowtown Cruisers did do it, it got a little out of hand.
Yeah, yeah.
But it was still...
Different venue.
Yeah, it was, it was still very impressive, and there was an aerial shot that someone took, and I don't remember where that photo went, maybe the newspaper has it somewhere, but it kind of looked like American graffiti had landed in South Lyon, for anybody knows what American graffiti is, since we're all dating ourselves now. But it was impressive as heck, and I work for a company that designs auto plants, you know, all over the world, and, boy, those guys are, they're already starting to come. And they put cars in the lot all the time over where we're at, and they're always heading the ones on the east side.
Right.
And they're thinking about coming to some of the ones that are left, you know, for at least come to visit anyway, you know? And so the word's getting out to quite a ways on the east side of town.
Yeah, we get quite a few people that, from north and south, and a couple eastsiders that were...
Eastsiders, yeah. And I, I go out to the east side to promote, you know, and, and I have friends out there as well, so I, I go out there and I'm always passing out flyers.
I got one question. Who drives the black Chevy with the fire on the hood? He comes in every once in a while.
Oh, that's Bobby Ragusa.
I've seen him all the way up in the, up in the Traverse City area, and I, and I've seen, driving that car.
Yeah, with the Lord.
Yeah.
Yeah, sounds like fun.
Maggie?
Yeah, I've been a real supporter of doing anything in the downtown, and I had a great opportunity to speak with, you know, the cooks at the opening that you had for the summer at Lake Street Tavern. So I'm always looking for opportunities to, you know, bring events to the downtown, and this is, you know, part of my agenda in terms of, you know, developing that downtown and moving forward with it. I think what makes your organization a real joy to work with is your reputation. I mean, you, you guys and, and women have a great reputation for organizing just a really, really nice classy events on Wednesday night. I, I have a neighbor that goes to car shows, and so I'm gonna drop this flyer off to his house tonight, because I'm pretty sure that he will bring some people, because he's an active participant in, in car shows. So he has been screaming for something like this in South Lyon. So it, I'm gonna tell you right now, you already have an audience, I did just want to ask one quick question. As says, approximate number of vehicles, 300 to 400?
Approximately, yeah.
I gotta tell you, you, you got my vote. I mean, you really do. You really do. This is fabulous, yeah.
Yeah, and it's, I, I stress to all the people, no burnouts, no, I mean, your engines are, those cars are loud, they're cool, I get it, I'm a part of that, but just keep it now, especially at the day of our event, because I don't want that to jeopardize what we've got going on.
Well, you have a nice crowd that follows you, and I think that says a lot about you as individuals organizing all these car events. You just tap into a really nice crowd of car owners, and what a great time, this is right after the Ann Arbor Art Fair, so you're gonna catch all those people that are looking for summer activities to go to. I think you planned it well, you got a great time. Boy, I wish it was this summer, but we'll see you on Wednesday. Well, and we've already talked to the cultural, car show, cultural art center, Josie and Linda, we had a quick meeting with them last week, and they will probably come in on this car show, too. Oh, really? Include them as part of it with an art show.
It's a great idea.
So we don't have all of the dynamics of what we're gonna do yet, because we don't want to spend a lot of hours and time planning when we don't even know if it'll fly, so...
That we won't get approval.
Right, so we haven't really, we've talked about a lot of things that we'd like to do, but until we get an okay from you guys to move forward, and as long as we follow your direction and stick within the rules that the chief puts on us...
I think with a sense of council, you're, you're covered, you cover the liability concerns that are, are available, and you should be good. I'd, I'd continue to stay on that message, though, about the burnouts. It's gonna, 300, 400 cars, there's gonna be a lot of testosterone out there.
And, and the older guys with the street rods, they're not the issue.
Yes.
The younger guys with those things and corvettes, but they're, they're usually, they're, they're calm.
Those old guys are gonna have to keep those young guys in check a little bit. bit. They do that in our office, too, so it's, uh, Maggie.
The other, the other comment that I wanted to make, which I think just speaks volumes for why I just really, really like your organization, because you're willing to come in and, and partner with one of our, uh, organizations, the Culture Arts, uh, Commission. And, and I think that's one of the visions of the Culture Arts Commission, is to partner with other organizations and come up with creative ways to promote the downtown. And, and, and here they have an opportunity to do it with this particular venue. So I just want to personally thank you for reaching out and forming that bridge and working with the Culture Arts Commission, because, because when there is success, um, on Wednesday night, it's really a success for you of, of how you've allowed this organization to be a part of your day. So thank you.
Thank you. We were talking about that, how that all got started last Wednesday. It was Bob and Linda and myself were all caught taking bricks from the hotel when they were knocking it down. And we just started talking, and it turned into the art show, the Cars in Art, and we just went off in three directions and said, let's see what we can do. And that's, that's how that whole thing started, that, this thing, coming up Wednesday.
Can you turn around and show the cameras your T-shirt? There you go. Arts and Cars. It's a great T-shirt.
And speaking of this, this, this coming Wednesday is the car art show up at, um, downtown, with the art show going on at the church, so.
Yeah, come on out, because it's, uh.
Starting at three o'clock.
It's going to be, according to Josie, it's, there's going to be quite a bit going on there. Some big tents and tables and chairs and stuff, so.
And there's no rain in the forecast.
Yes.
Right.
John, I have a couple of comments.
Joe.
Um, two points, real quick. I, uh, the, the first thing I, I like is about the event, the car show, not just this, but all of them, is that you're bringing, uh, exposure and money to the downtown. Um, and a lot of exposure locally, but also from other communities. So my, my vision is that people come down, they see such a nice event, they see the downtown, and then they come back again. And that's, and if, at the very least, they're coming once a month, and you repeat people who normally aren't coming to our city. So thank you for, for that. The other thing, uh, that I'm impressed with, with your organization is it's a very good, um, feeling of just a family atmosphere with a lot of, lot of families. And then, at the same time, you have a lot of senior citizens there who enjoy the 50s music, early 60s music, and it's a really good wholesome event, and it really speaks to our community to bring everybody together. Because I've seen little kids, I bring my kids, all the way up to 80, 90-year-old seniors enjoying all those cars. So I don't want to lose sight of, of the senior citizens who really enjoy seeing all the old cars and, and, uh, spending time, and all the families in general. So I think it's a valuable, um, service that you provide and event that you provide, and when it comes time for a vote, 100% on board. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Did you, uh, meet the couple that was here last time? They drove the, the Austin Martin, the new one?
I didn't see.
They were parked kind of at the end of the town, and they.
Oh, okay.
Hiding down there a little bit, but he's from England.
Okay.
And they live in the township, and they said they, they were coming through, and they were so impressed with the cars and everything. He says, obviously, I'm a car guy, you know, and it was like so.
Yeah, great.
So you're getting a lot of attention.
Well, it's getting bigger every month. As long as the weather holds up.
Yeah, the weather's the...
We had a guy that came from Australia to buy a car, and he had purchased it, and then heard about the show and came over, uh, that month as well. And then he was taking it to the, the shipping company to have it shipped back that month. So he was, he was really impressed with that, what we had going.
It is an impressive show. You guys have done a terrific job. It's well organized, there's a lot of enthusiasm. People take a lot of pride in their rides. I mean, it's perfect.
We're going to, we're going to have some help on this one. We're going to tap into some of those, uh, spark plugs and the Kowtown Cruisers and other clubs, you know, how we have our feature clubs. Those people get, you know, get those people to help out, pitch in. Um, it's enough, too much for seven or eight of us to do, and then our volunteers.
Sure.
Especially with the one right before it on Wednesday, then we kick this one off on Saturday, so, um, but I, I think it'll work.
Very cool.
Thank you very much.
Good deal.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm just going to reiterate all that. July 26th, it's Wednesday, um, 3:00 to 9:30 downtown, uh, Lake Street, um, in front of the First Presbyterian Church. And also, they are wonderful to work with. We, I mean, the meetings are really quick and, but we get a lot of, a lot of stuff done. It's really, it's just really fun to work with them. They're top drawer. It's great. I can't say enough good.
Thanks, Josie.
Old business, consider revised vacation accrual policies for department heads and the city manager. I guess that's you, Tim.
I can try and address this. Um, so this, uh, this resolution would implement a, an 80-hour total cap with 40 hours accumulating in each of two years. So, uh, this provision really only affects the city manager and department heads. And, um, I think if you use the maximum, I, I don't remember if the schedule, but it's a 200 hour, so we thought the maximum would be 280 hours available time. Um, it breaks it into the, the leave that you accrue on the anniversary of your hire date, the carryover, we had to identify because of the 40-year limit per year, which gets you to the total available, and then we would also freeze the bank. So the clarification and, uh, is on the employee's or department head's anniversary date, if they could accrue 200 hours. The calculation of whether they forfeit any time is made at that point in time. There's no rolling going forward as they use it, they get an hour back kind of thing. So it's at one point in time, you can have up to 280 hours, and that's what this, this policy, uh, implements. Are there any questions?
Well, to be perfectly honest, I don't, I don't remember the whole 200-hour aspect of it. I thought it was, the 80-hour was the cap.
The 80-hour would be the maximum carryover. Uh, the 200 hours is an annual leave that department, I think that's the maximum that a department head could accrue in an annual basis.
Right, okay.
So at, at the, at their anniversary, they get the new 200 hours. They could have up to 280 additional hours for a total of 280. Anything, any time that's banked currently would be frozen, but become, be available for use, uh, subject to approval through, you know, that it's convenient and efficient for the, for the city if that time is used.
Can you say it again about the 200 hours, so it'd be, that they wouldn't be able to carry it over?
I, I think it's the maximum amount that a department head or city manager can be eligible to get on the anniversary of their hire date would be 200 hours.
Okay, that's their, that's their five, five weeks.
Five years.
So they accrue that on the anniversary date of their hire. So at that point in time, they would have available 200 hours. If they didn't use all of that time, they could carry over, in the first year after this policy, they could carry over 40 hours.
Okay.
And if they, in the following year, they could carry over 40 additional hours for a total of 280. They can never have more than 200 available hours, 280 available hours going forward. And that's exclusive of the frozen bank time.
But the frozen bank is for the existing department heads or managers.
So that's, that's designed not to punish them and make them lose time.
That goes away with the change.
Correct. So that's basically 80 hours is the two weeks pay you can carry over.
Right. Personally, I'd like to see you guys take all your vacation when you have it, so you're nice and rested, and when you're working, you're all ready to roll. But, um, I don't think that this is abusive, so I'm all right with that.
Yeah, I'd like, I'd like to hear a comment, uh, from both Bob and Lloyd, and, and, um, I don't think that's, okay, that's not two department heads that are affected by that. Are you affected by that, Mike? No?
I may be too.
Um, I think this is reasonable, and I would have been more than happy to partake with this. The way I got to where I did is 17, 18 years out of superintendent, 25 days a year, and I use approximately 15, and I would carry 10. 10 times 18 years, bang.
Yeah.
That was it. And it was never a hidden agenda, a secret or anything. I lived within what was set forth, and it just never got brought out. And it probably went up this time, if something didn't happen at this last budget meeting that popped it out of, out of an envelope, and that's pretty much, all of a sudden, it became a conversation piece, okay? Um, but many past department heads and, uh, city managers lived by this, and, uh, Building Department, DPW Superintendent, Water Department, city managers, all did exactly what I had and got cashed out and moved through the system, and very little was ever said about it. And, and that was nothing more to it than that. So I just want to say.
Well, no one sees it as an abuse. It was just, that was an old practice. It no longer exists.
Exactly, exactly. Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
I think that's reasonable.
Yeah.
I certainly understand the concept of unfunded liability and council's decision to minimize that. Um, I would only have a word of caution that it can be difficult to use 200 hours in a year for a department head, uh, that needs to be here, that needs to sign checks when other people are not here to sign those checks, uh, to fill in when other people are sometimes not here for extended periods. So that could be a little tight. I hate to be in the position of use there, lose it, but I certainly understand council's intent.
I know Lloyd, like I, work just about every holiday, so our guys can have the time off with their families. I know Lloyd's here every Thanksgiving, every Christmas. But he makes Thanksgiving dinner a lot of times for his guys.
We, uh, yes, we have provided many, many holiday meals at my home and invited the crews that were working.
All right, thanks.
Does Bob, would this affect Bob?
Yes.
Apparently I'd be unlimited still. That's what it says. I'm not a department head.
Well, it's for any employee that was going to be.
So you, so what are you regulated by? The handbook?
Right.
The count, uh, the, the city handbook?
Uh, yes, I'm, other than not being a department head, yes.
Okay.
Maggie?
Yeah, I had some, um, comments on it. Uh, that was one of, uh, the issues that I had, is that this is limited to city managers or department heads. And I think the whole point of dealing with contingent liabilities is to have this, um, affect all employees in the city.
Mr. Mayor, I could shed some light on that with respect to the Police Department. Um, there is currently a cap on the, uh, police bargaining units.
Yeah, I understand.
And, and in fact, we have taken away bits and pieces of vacation time from officers when they hit that cap.
Yeah, okay. Um, I, I understand that we have union and non-union employees, and I understand union employees have a different formula. I'm only concerned right now with controlling what I can control, and that's the non-union side. So, uh, I thought this was going to be a little bit broader to include all city employees. Yes?
Mr. Mayor? Uh, Lynn and I did identify that issue. We talked about it. We didn't feel, we wanted to do a little bit of checking on the other employees and what's banked, so that we didn't, and we didn't think we could get the policy in place and ready to go for tonight in time. So that she's aware of that, and it's, it's my understanding that it's her intent to bring a similar policy that would affect all the other employees that are non-department head, non-city manager, and outside the unions. Because I, I believe, but per the manual, they're entitled up to, to bank up to 30 days of leave time.
Yeah. So that, that's my first concern, is, is that I thought it was going to be a little bit broader. And, um, in terms of carrying over, uh, where does it say that carried over annual leave, um, will not be paid out?
It's my understanding that it will be.
That, that...
Upon the termination, uh, on the end of, whether it's retirement, resignation, or layoff.
I don't, I don't care if an employee is paid for vacation time that they have not taken, their annual leave, that they normally would get in the year in which termination occurs. I'm not willing to pay for vacation time that is moved over into a following year. That, that's the whole point of the contingent liability. So I, I mean, I'm just not prepared to, I, I mean, then, then why even have the policy? Because you're still paying out, you're just paying out a lesser amount. That's all you're doing. And the whole point was to, to take care of this issue out there in terms of a legacy cost. And you're kind of doing it, but you're not completely dealing with it.
It's just a, uh, yeah, it's a, a way of, to measure it and meter it, so you can control it, so.
Mr. Mayor, if you could get some additional discussion from council, I mean, you guys can make the policy whatever you want. I just want to know what you want.
I thought we.
That's what we, so we.
We, yeah, if you want to carry it over, but you're not getting paid for it.
Well, the last, the last meeting, the last two meetings have been referenced to five days. There was some compromise discussion, I don't remember who it was, to go up to 80 hours or 10 days, and that's what we've got. I don't remember any discussion about not being paid out for carried over time. If that's what you want, I'm happy to do that. I'm, I'm not.
I, I don't care if the time.
Not trying to disregard anybody's instructions, I just wasn't aware of it.
I don't care if somebody carries over their time, and I think I gave some very specific examples. They may have a trip to Europe, they may have a kid getting married in another state, and they want to take some time and travel. I, I don't care if they carry over time. The issue for me is reducing the legacy cost. That's, that's my issue. And, and we're dealing with it a little bit, but not completely. So, and then the other one is in section three, it says, request, and, and if, if they leave, I'm going to go back to number five. If they retire, resign, or they're laid off, they will be paid for any, um, accumulated unused annual leave for the current year. I would agree with that. You know, an employee may find themselves in a difficult circumstance in the middle of the year, didn't have time to take their vacation time. I don't think that's a penalty. You don't pay them. But I, I am not in favor if they decide to carry over some of their annual leave into a subsequent year, say year two, and that's the year they decide to find another job. I'm not willing to pay for anything that they voluntarily carry over at, at all. Nothing. Um, additionally, in section three, it says, use of annual leave shall first, uh, come from the current annual leave, and then, uh, request to use time from the frozen bank may be denied if its approval would interfere with the efficient operation of the city or the department, or if the time from the frozen bank has been paid to the employee. Because this frozen bank is another thing that hopefully will go away. They're going to be paid. I mean, to me, that's, that is, that is what I thought we were going to do, is take care of the contingent liability. That includes frozen banked time. So if somebody was paid for only half their time this time, then I would hope within this next year, we are closing them out of all frozen time, period. Here's your check. You're done. That's a contingent liability. That continues to...
But are you suggesting a change? I'm not sure I understand.
Yeah, yeah, I am. Number three. Number three, I, well, you know.
To pay it at today's dollars.
Excuse me, council has to approve the change, but I am suggesting that we add the language, or if the time from the frozen bank has been paid to the employee. If the time's been paid to the employee, then, then the employee cannot resort to the frozen bank for anything, because this, they've been paid out. They're done.
Well, if there's no frozen bank, if there's no hours in it and it's been paid out, then there is no frozen bank left.
That's correct. That's the whole point. That's the whole point.
Well, I think that's the way I read it.
But that's not what you have. That's not what you, I want to make it clear.
Okay, I'll see what I can do.
Additionally, um, I do have a copy of the, um, handbook, and you could probably tell me, but I did not see in that handbook, at the end of the handbook, I usually, when I do employment... but I did not see in that handbook, at the end of the handbook, usually when I do employment handbooks, and it's probably there and I just didn't see it, is you have, if you're going to be amending the handbook, I would also add this additional language, further that the city reserves the right to amend the personnel manual for any reason without notice to the employees, well, no, with notice to the employees and an effective date be included as to when the policy comes in. I think it's only fair to let the employees know that this manual is a fluid document and put something in there that they understand. Every policy I've ever read has that language in it. I didn't see it in ours, but I think I would just consider adding that in if you're going to be amending the policy. But I'm not prepared to vote for this tonight.
Yeah, I, I had a few comments similar. I was under the impression that it was going to be use it or lose it and then you're able with, you're able to carry over time, but you wouldn't be paid for it. So, I'd like to see that. Other point is, again, I'd like to have this applied towards all employees, all non-union And then also, my other comment is, I don't think we necessarily have to approve this tonight. We could postpone it and keep it on the agenda and it would still be at the forefront even if it takes a couple revisions to get it right. Because what we're looking at here is, is something that is going to really impact the next 20, 30 years and there's no, it's no sense in rushing on voting on it tonight if we could postpone it and get it right the next meeting. That's, that's my whole point. That's all, all my comments today.
Maggie, were you suggesting that we pay off the frozen bank early so we can use it at today's rate?
Absolutely.
Okay.
That's a good business-
But that's a separate question to this, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Now, when you pay them off is a separate issue for a different time.
Right.
But there's a reason why I would like to cap out those, the frozen bank, but that's, that's for a different night.
For the, the recipient's benefit, I'd like us to end up trying to coordinate with them so that if they have any financial instruments that they can take advantage of, so they don't get penalized from some kind of a financial windfall, that we, we work to try to coordinate with them so that it works to their best interest. That the timing isn't going to end up being that critical for how much more expensive it would be.
May I? I, I don't know if I necessarily agree with that position. I think the issue is, is dealing what's best for the city. That's it. And if the city determines that paying this off March 1st is going to be a benefit to the city, then the employee can go see their CPA and figure out how they want to take the money or how they're going to pay their taxes on it. But these are fairly large chunks of money and to have the city sit and wait for someone to do their tax planning to decide whether or not they're going to take the payment this year or five years from now when they retire, when their income drops, I, I think that defeats the purpose of taking care of these contingent liabilities as soon as possible.
I'm not suggesting five years down the road. Talking about a matter of months.
Harvey. That's not the issue before us tonight. I do have, I, I did pick up one piece of, one suggestion that I think I would like to see more on, rather than just label it for the city manager and department heads, label it for all non-union employees. Is that something that we can do?
Yes.
Well, there will be, there's a separate provision elsewhere in the personnel manual that addresses the accumulation of leave by-
Okay.
-other non-union employees.
Well, I, I would like to see the, so, so that we have some continuity between all of the department heads, city manager, and non-union employees.
Lynn is aware of that.
Okay.
And she has a plan to address that.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to postpone this until the next meeting to review further.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, number one, a new business has been postponed to the next meeting. So, consider approval of Matt Cat's beach wrestling tournament.
Oh, yeah, actually, I did want to disclose that my son wrestles for the team. I'm actually not even going to be at the event. I have no financial interest other than my son gets a scholarship someday in wrestling, maybe. But, no, but seriously, there's no financial interest. The, the team filled out all the paperwork and Chief Collins helped facilitate it. Everything's the same as last year, same, it's going to be at McCatty Park Friday night. Pretty self-explanatory.
I know it's a great event. I got lots of friends. I'm older than you guys now, so my kids are out, but it's quite the event. And from what I've heard from all the other parents and everybody, that the kids get so excited about this and it's quite a deal to come to South Lion and have this event hosted. Another chance for, an opportunity for a lot of people to experience the city in a different way. And these kids are so exciting to watch and who knows where they're headed next.
They're talented, too.
Exactly.
Very talented.
I think it's a lot of fun in a different format, too.
Maggie.
Yeah, I was going to also comment, I know a couple of parents with, that have their children in Matt Cats and is this the second year, Joe?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's at, right at the beach.
Yeah, right, right there at the volleyball courts?
Yep.
Is it, this is the second year for this event? Yeah. Because apparently last year, it was just a phenomenal success and I'm hoping to make it this year and watch it just because I, I heard it was just absolutely fabulous.
It's the, actually, this Friday.
Yep, Friday night.
It's around, actually, what time is it? I'm sorry. Six o'clock? Yeah. Yeah, five o'clock to 6:00 PM check-in, 6:50 to seven o'clock is, seven o'clock is when they'll start competing. And it's just, it's a fun event. The kids wrestle. There'll be kids from other communities as well, pretty much from all over the state, maybe even Ohio. So, it's good exposure for the city. Afterwards, I'm sure some kids will grab somebody screaming Mickey's or head downtown and enjoy our town.
Some of these little guys were up in Traverse City not too long ago either. They did fare well, represented South Lion pretty well from what I understand.
Yep. So, since this is my son's team, I don't prefer to make the motion. I, I don't think it's a problem to vote on it, but-
I'll make it.
This has already been approved, hasn't it, Chief?
No, it has not.
It's not? Okay.
And, and I would add that similar to other organizations and similar to last year, it will be necessary pursuant to city policy for the organization to provide a copy of the actual insurance policy. That has not taken place yet and it would normally not take place until closer to the event.
Well, contingent on that, then.
Mr. Mayor, if, if you recall, last year, we had an issue regarding this, this organization. It gets its insurance through a national organization and it did not provide a copy of the insurance policy. They have provided a copy of the insurance certificate showing the city as an additional insured and they've provided the hold harmless agreement.
Yeah, and, and actually, that's consistent. I spoke to Lynn about this and there's the hold harmless, there's the approval from South Lion Rec. You have a copy of the no-fault liability insurance cover sheet. The city says it's their named insured, all the language we need. It's just the particular insurance company does not have a copy of the actual insurance. So, last year, it was the same thing. All this, the documentation was appropriate and Lynn, when I spoke to her, too bad she's not here tonight, but she said that this was perfectly fine to pass. That was her opinion as the city manager, without conditions.
I'm willing to move this without conditions. I move to approve the beach classic wrestling tournament to be held on the volleyball courts in McCatty Park on Saturday, July 28, 2017 from five to seven, from 5:00 PM to 10:00 PM.
I'll support.
On favor?
Aye.
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 Everybody show. It's a great, it is a great show. And the kids love it. I mean, I mean-
Love it.
I haven't had the opportunity to go back down and start being with the younger kids again. I wish I was like you guys' age again and do this. All I can relate back to was my kids were involved in all of this and it's grown in stature to a much higher level now, kind of where football was at, you know, and the soccer and lacrosse, the, the integrated lacrosse team, the unified team, you know, and now you've got this wrestling that's just blowing up out here. So, it's going to be a feeder, quite the feeder to the high schools.
And, and if I may add, the, the actual team is located in the city of South Lion. I know we get hung up sometimes on borders, but it is worth noting that they're out of the playground. So, this is legitimately a homegrown team that competes all over the state and all over the nation, so it's, it's good organization.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thanks.
All right. Budget.
Yeah, I have a couple things, but I don't know if anybody else does. I can wait.
Go ahead.
Um, I have two issues and the first one is, I've been looking at the charter and I'm, I'm a little bit confused, so I just need some clarification. The charter in chapter 12 states that council shall have the power to fix such just and reasonable rates and other charges as may be deemed advisable for supplying the inhabitants of the city and others with such public utility services as the city may provide. And so, my question is, is are we following the charter and getting council approval in a resolution for any and all of our water rates? I haven't seen it.
Yeah, how do we set the rates? I mean, I remember talking about that in the summer, we get a break.
Water rates? Water rates? Is that what you're speaking of?
Yeah.
It's an ongoing thing that in the past, city managers usually, an edict came down
from onto, from above. Then we started using plant Moran for a while and it became so complicated that we would look and through the years of manager Murphy, and the rates were increased by somewhere about eight to 10 percent and that was it. But before that, Rod would just sit at his desk and make a comment. He would do his own investigation, if you will, and-
But it was approved by council.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
Where, where are those resolutions in minutes? Because I tried finding them and could not find, because those change every year or every other year. So, I haven't seen any, yes, Tim?
Mr. Mayor, I do, I don't know all the details, but I do know the DWRF program that the city participated in had stated rate increases for the water service in connection with that program, which may be a question of what form the approval took, but it was certainly, at least in my recollection, there was, it was made known that participating and doing that financing would result in specific rate increases in water rates.
We had that gentleman from Traverse City, Warren, somebody who might-
Kramer.
Thank you. Warren Kramer wrote the numbers for us and worked it out.
That was last year. I spoke with him last year.
Okay, but he did it back in the, for the five-year rate increase during the-
DWRF.
The DWRF, correct.
Yeah. Well, I think, because I tried to find the resolution in the minutes because I'm getting into enterprise funds and so, one of the things that, that is popping up is this issue of who is authorizing the rates that are being fed into the enterprise fund. And so, I think that the best practice was, was to make sure that city council was involved because sometimes you have other authorities that are raising these rates, but you have to go to the city charter and I was surprised to find a chapter in our charter regarding utility franchises that is pretty explicit about who can approve the rates.
And what did it say?
Well, that's the city council.
Yeah, that's what I was-
Yeah.
They always voted on it. I guarantee you, whether it be manager Murphy or manager Cook, it was always brought forward and then the council would vote on it.
Yeah, I can't, I can't, I don't know about when David Murphy was here, but I do remember slightly when I was on the council, when Rod Cook was the city manager, those conversations coming up in our meetings-
Absolutely.
Where he would address it. I do remember that.
Yeah.
Specifically, I do not, but I remember him leading us down that path and explaining to us how it was to be done and why he felt as though we were going to do it and we would then approve it or-
There were always recommendations and when Dave was here was, there was predictions on where costs were escalating and what, what we needed to do to offset them.
When was the last time we voted on that, though? I don't recall us even voting.
Yeah, when was the last time rates were voted on?
What, the last rate increase?
Yeah.
No, just setting the rate, approving the rate.
Well, Warren Kramer brought, at this meeting during the DWRF, and it, at that time, there was like a four-year rate increase that was done. And then it took effect every June 1st for like four years and they smoothed out the rates. Remember that?
Right.
And they were approximately four to six percent increases every year, probably going from, I'm thinking, probably like 11, 12, 13 and 14.
I don't remember. That sounds about right, but I don't remember.
Yeah, I mean, the, the DWRF occurred in, the water main project occurred in 13 and 14.
Okay.
So, I think it started in 12, the year before. It's reasonable, I think I could do some checking on that.
But I'd be curious to see if we approved the full five years.
Yeah, I kind of, yeah.
You don't think we did? I think we did, Joe.
I don't know.
I don't know. I, I tried to find this stuff, but, but all I'm doing is just doing research, so-
You know, that'd be easy enough to find, though. We could call Warren on that.
Yeah, but what I'm looking for is the council authority. I mean, I think people probably followed Mr. Kramer's suggestions, but what I'm looking for is the actual authority by council that accepted or adopted his recommendations. I'm just looking for compliance with the charter, that's all.
Okay.
In, in terms of that.
I get that.
So, um, so the sale of wastewater is, who sets that fee?
The same, exactly the same.
Council does?
Yes.
Okay. And who sets the tube mill water treatment? That, that's a number there is-
It's the same thing, Maggie.
Okay.
Everything is brought to the council and the council weighs in on it. I have no authority whatsoever.
Okay.
I don't ever remember voting on the tube mill, so.
Yeah, I thought you were going to-
Yeah. Same time we approved rate increases, we'd approve theirs.
It would just get rolled onto that. But here's what we found out about that. Let's say, since they're charged less because it's untreated water-
Mm-hmm.
And let's say there was a, I'm just throwing a number out. Let's say it was an eight percent increase on city drinking water and if city drinking water at the time was $2.12, or eight percent of 2.25 is a whole lot more than eight percent of, let's say, 58 cents.
Mm-hmm.
And so, what we did is, whatever the rate increase was of eight percent of 2.25, that dollar amount or that cent amount, that's what the tube mill went up. Not the eight percent, but the actual cent of what eight percent of 2.25 was. Does that make sense what I'm saying? That's how we did that.
I think for next year, I'm going to ask for a lot more detail on these so that I think it's pretty clear, so I have it in my mind- Fine. That, that that's what's going on. And who determines the restricted and unrestricted portions of the enterprise funds?
I'll, I'll, I'm having a hard time hearing you at the phone.
Oh, the restricted and unrestricted? Who, who sets that ratio?
I never have, believe me. You talking about of the water, of the reserved rates?
Yes.
Yeah.
Who, who sets that?
I would probably weigh in and ask Lori about that.
I would have thought the state, actually, so.
You what?
I would have thought the state.
State?
I don't know.
Because I had an opportunity to read a policy that was adopted in Tahoe, city of Tahoe. Their people, their council adopts the policy for what is to be restricted and unrestricted. So, that's why I'm asking the question is, number one, what is that ratio? Who determines that ratio? And where's the policy for that? Because that almost sounds like that's probably a council policy.
I think so.
I mean, because if you're dealing with restricted and unrestricted funds in the enterprise- enterprise fund, when the whole purpose of the enterprise funds is to build a bank of money so that you have an opportunity to repair and maintain your system that delivers the utility services, you want to make sure that your enterprise funds are sufficient enough and you've set enough aside so that you can meet those emergencies. So where is the policy coming from that says, we're now setting aside 30 percent of our reserves for future emergencies or what? Where's that policy coming from? Do we even have one? Do we have one? Do?
I know we have a very large sum of money set aside, okay? The dollar amount, the way it's put in there, and why it's considered restricted, I've never made that policy, never.
You know, actually, after you couched it, I, I think that, that Cook might have actually determined what that split was.
Rod did?
Yeah.
Do you remember that at all, Harv?
Sure, there's gotta be some calculation.
No.
Somebody's gotta be calculating something.
But my instinct.
The tap-in fees.
My instinct would be that that would be probably involve the input from our auditors, Plant Moran, because they are looking at the enterprise fund through the knowledge of what an enterprise fund is and must be, so.
We're dealing with it right now. We are writing, and it's due this week, the asset management plan to the state of Michigan. And we speak about the reserved rates.
Yeah.
Do we have money set aside? And we do, and we're fine. But with that said, I've never set bond mileage rates on the water, never, ever, or rate increases. I've sat in meetings or on committees that we weighed in on it with Plant Moran and stuff like that, but that was the extent of my authority on that.
Because Rod, you used to have meetings fairly routinely with Miller Cantfield on bond things that we were forecasting, and he would have the, these little sidebars, I think, that they kind of worked through what percentages of, of the restricted and unrestricted would end up being a good assignation for our circumstances.
Well, I think we probably need a little bit of update here and need some clarification as to how this policy is being determined and who's implementing it. And I think the, the research that I've done on this to date says that these policies need to be reviewed at least once a year. And, and they, you know, some very good points were made, is that when you're gonna borrow money or you're gonna issue bonds, is that this reserve that you set on these enterprise funds may affect your bond rating, may affect the interest rate that you receive on your bonds. So if you don't have a lot of money set aside in this restricted fund area, it could potentially affect the city's borrowing. Because when you go to issue a bond, they look at all potential liabilities that the city would have, and that would include repair, maintenance, and the sewer water department. So it seems a little archaic what the city's been doing, you know, kind of, you know, well, let's open up a drawer, let's blow off the dust, let's take a look at what we've been doing. It does not seem to be current with what some cities are doing in terms of their practice, so I want to bring.
I guarantee you, Maggie, that we do not reach in and.
That's not the issue, that's.
No, but I just wanted to say we don't draw on that much.
That, that's not even the issue, Bob. The, the issue is, is who's setting the policy for the restricted and unrestricted funds on the enterprise side. Now, the additional accounting issue that, I've, I've ordered some lawsuits out in California, I want to take a look at them, is whenever you have a salary like Lynn's, and she allocates some of that to the sewer water department, which I think she did this time, she's allocating a certain portion of her salary, you have to make sure that she can document the hours in which she is allocating. Because these are enterprise funds, so they're like trust funds. So, and I think Lynn's probably right, but I'm just letting people know that there should be an audit trail available that if she says $30,000 of her salary is attributed to work being done at DPW in the water department, there should be some accountability that in fact she is spending about $30,000 of her salary on DPW issues, whether it's employment, whether it's going into the field of monitoring, whatever. So I think my research is showing is that this is another issue, just to make sure. I'm, I'm just brainstorming with people, I'm just.
Well, I am sure Plant Moran addresses that.
I don't know.
Because we, a portion of that audit is paid through the enterprise fund.
Right, because they're coming over and they're ordering the rates and they're, that's why. That's why, so.
Exactly.
They, they know because they're, they are monitoring their time, just like an attorney bills their time.
Yeah.
So they're sitting there, so they, they're pretty accurate as to what that is. The other thing that I wanted to, that I found interesting in the charter is, in Section 12.3B, it says, "The rates and charges for any municipal utility shall be fixed as to at least meet all the costs of such utility, including depreciation." So, you know, if you have the sewer and water department operating at a loss, then we are not complying with that, this section of the charter that requires it to be operating at least to meet all costs. So I just want to say that we need to stay on top of that, too, when we're looking at sewer and water, is you can't sit there and be hesitant to raise a water rate because you have a charter obligation to ensure that those departments are operating at least as a cost. So, there's that comment. I don't know if anybody has anything on those issues, and I have another issue regarding the budget.
Yeah, I want to come back to the, to the water rates. So over the, if, if we're approving, I, I don't remember approving recently, but if we're approving a certain rate through the year, how do we determine what we're paying, what residents are paying in the summer? And who makes that decision? Because they pay less in the summer.
Correct.
So how's that factor, and who does that factor?
That policy, Joe, has been on the books forever, and it's a very fair policy, and it's actually saved the city money over the years.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not questioning that. I'm, I'm curious, how does that get determined?
How does it get?
No, no, no. How, how do you set the dollar amount, and how do we determine how much we're taking out?
Average for the other three quarters.
Correct. So the.
The usages.
They take the summer quarter, okay? Then they look back at the three previous quarters, spring, winter, and fall, take the sewer usage for individual resident or account bill, take that bill and average over the three quarters, and that's what we charge for the summer quarter.
You still pay your water, just not the sewer.
Yeah, I understand, and I just want to make sure, you know, given how we stated about the charter, how it sets, I want to make sure that we have it all clear and it's being adjusted accordingly.
So that's all based on averaged usages per household, per?
Do we have a written policy somewhere?
I'm just trying to get an understanding for that, too. It's kind of a.
I, I don't want to make more work than we have to, but if we don't have something in writing, I want to make sure that this isn't just something we're doing, because we've been doing it 20 years. I want to make sure there's a policy actually in place.
Okay.
Well, the plant is only operating to the same capacity as what that average is, though, so, I mean, it's not going to end up costing us any more to end up charging the appropriate amount.
Right, but if I was a resident and I was to say, how much do I pay in the summer compared to how much do I pay in the winter? And I had said, can you point me to that policy? It would be, call Bob. That would basically be it. Correct?
Actually, it would be call Phyllis.
Call Phyllis.
Or billing clerk.
Okay. That, that's what I'm trying to get to, and I think we need to eventually modernize to.
Yeah.
Is going, stepping out of the, we've been doing it this way for so many years, and it's, I think that's how we've gotten in a lot of trouble, so, in the past.
What trouble we get in, Joe? Tell me.
Well, we, as you recall, we had the water billing issue earlier this year with fraudulent water bills. I think that was some trouble a lot of people had.
Oh, the one that was solved two years earlier, yeah.
That was a couple of years ago, yeah, I remember that, too. That was shown to be some time ago, and then it was corrected.
No, it wasn't.
Some time, yeah, it wasn't.
The lady came forward. I, I never, we never received the report.
I think you answered my question, thank you.
No, I, I, all right, I'm sorry.
I think Section 12.3 says council shall have the power to fix the rates, and, and this policy that's being used, because it's been in place for years and years and years, I think this is one of those issues that probably should come before council, get it approved, so that there's no doubt if the city were ever audited, that, that there has been a paper trail as to how these rates are, are being set. That, that's all.
And the city is audited every year.
This is called modernizing the city, Waddell, so.
But I get with the program.
I am with the program.
No, you're not.
You don't know what you're talking about.
Listen, listen, everything was going good up until a few minutes ago, so let's just keep this non-personal and just get back to the topic.
I was gonna comment on communities that have dual water meters in their house.
Mm-hmm.
For sprinklers and, you know, everyday use, right? What happens there is, most of those sprinklers, those are newer communities or newer subdivisions that were put in with dual lines going out, okay? We've never had that luxury here. So for us to try to put dual water meters in somebody's basement, you're talking about some serious plumbing work, Joe.
But, Bob.
That's not the issue.
Yeah, that's not the issue.
The issue is, we don't have anything on, on record of how we're even billing people.
Well, we might, Joe. I'm gonna check.
Yeah, that would be great.
If you were to comment, we would have checked, and we would have tried to bring it to the meeting, so I didn't know we were gonna have.
No, but you just, you just stated that you talked to Phyllis if you want to, if you want to get that information.
Well, I think you just answered it just now. He's gonna check.
It won't, it won't be hard to end up creating the language that would explain this anyway, so.
Let me just check.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's easy to draft.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's an easy thing to draft. Okay, I had another issue on budget.
Good.
This goes to what I've been talking about for about a year is MERS, the retirement issue that we have. And the Detroit News just came out with an article, and I, again, want to bring it to council's attention, I'm only one vote, about our unfunded pension liability that we have. As we all know, Rick Snyder, our governor, put together a task force on problems with funding retirement. I've been fortunate to get a copy of the report. It's about a 41-page report that he's put out. It doesn't really have a lot of conclusions, but I, I find it to be pretty informative with respect to how we got there, and I think the state is trying to do a good job as to identifying the problem and putting everybody on notice. So once again, I am going to remind council that several years ago, you had an opportunity to deal with this problem. One of the reasons I did not vote for the budget was because council didn't even put a penny towards funding or paying down the unfunded MERS problem, which means that the city's gonna have to start looking at this next year very seriously. I do want to say that the City of Grand Rapids has reduced its health care and liabilities. It has closed the defined benefit retiree healthcare system. It has moved all non-vested employees to a defined contribution healthcare plan, that's, they were dealing with healthcare. Grand Rapids has a significant amount of money, and they have reduced its unfunded healthcare liability from 223 million in 2009 to 200, to 111 million in 2015. Kalamazoo has also worked on, working to deal with its unfunded retiree, and here, Kalamazoo is dealing with healthcare. The city is expected to save close to 3.5 million dollars over the next 30 years on programs that they've instituted. So certainly, from this report, it says there have been some improvements in some governments prefunding their commitments, but in some cases, governments are reducing their liabilities through changes in collective bargaining agreements with their union partners. And this seems to be something that Grand Rapids, I think, was able to do. So I, I just think that, for whatever reason, the city has not been serious about taking care of this problem. I've been talking about it for a year. If the city had started dealing with it three, four years ago, when they had MERS in here, even putting $200,000 down a year would put us in a far better position than where we're at today, because that number is increasing at an increasing rate. So what we will be dealing with next year will be over $5 million. And I think it's pretty hard to go to the taxpayers and ask them to pick up the tab, but that's what's probably gonna happen. So I would say that for anybody that's here after November, working on the budget, gonna have to get very serious about how we are going to solve this problem. And if that means moving employees into 401Ks, putting a cutoff, making it obligatory for new hires as they come in, the city has to start making the transition. It's a culture issue that's been a problem, and it's just draining the city of resources. You don't have the money to do a whole lot of stuff when, when you're gonna be paying down five to six million dollars in unfunded liabilities in retirement. I, I just can't stress how serious this issue is. That's my comments on the budget.
Yeah, I, I'm gonna, I've been, to be honest, this MERS scares the heck out of me. I mean, this is one of the reasons, unfunded liabilities and pensions, that Detroit went bankrupt, not the only reason, but one of the, one of the reasons. And, you know, I think it does speak to the culture, because you look at the vacation payouts, and, yeah, we've been doing it for so many years, and that's why we've been doing it. But, actually, I think, Bob, you kind of put it so eloquently that it kind of snuck out of the envelope, and then all of a sudden, we had to address it. And I'm glad it did sneak out of the envelope, because that is an unfunded liability that the city doesn't, finally is getting a grasp on. And, you know, the MERS went from, I think it was 2.7, 2013, we're above 5 million now. And actually, I wish Kramer was here, because he got into a little spirited debate with me about having proposals before us, and yes, there were proposals, but council has not chosen to act on it, and, you know, for the past year at least, I, at least, I've been kind of bringing this issue as well to the forefront, and I think we need to continue looking at it. So, MERS priority, and also the all unfunded liabilities need to be addressed, and, yeah, I think after November, we're gonna take a really hard look at this as well, so, thank you. One more question on the budget, though, now I think about it. I did want, one of the things that came up during our last meetings was the fact that last, not last meeting, but, yeah, it was last meeting, that the overtime, if we were to continue at the current rate, that we would spend more money in overtime than what we have budgeted for. And specifically, we were like, one of the things that stood out was wastewater and DPW, and there was 86.5 combined hours.
I'd like to speak to that.
Yes.
I wasn't at the meeting. There were two issues going on there. The first one was the overtime, you guys, you can't speak of the water and the DPW, they're two separate units. DPW is general fund, water department, and wastewater is enterprise fund, okay?
Okay.
Joe?
Yep.
Stick with me.
I'm, I'm listening.
Okay. So, the big windstorm that occurred, what was that, in March, I believe? That was 77 straight hours, 77 straight hours of no power in the city. We addressed that. We worked 77 straight hours. We stand by power generators at every lift station, wastewater plant, water plant, including the Four Corners, McCady Street and Pontiac Trail, Nine Mile and Pontiac Trail, 11 Mile and Pontiac Trail. We were out there constantly. That's that one. The other one for the water and wastewater occurred due to a failed number-one well. It was stuck in the casing 136 feet down. The well was installed, Joe, in 1963. We could not get the well out of the ground. It was encrusted in the ground. We tried for three months to get this thing out. What happened? They kept working, they kept working, they kept working. Here comes summer, here comes summer, here comes heat, and no rain. Here comes summer, here comes summer, here comes heat, and no rain. So for three weeks, we milked the system until we finally got that well out, totally revamped, and put back in the hole. I think it was extremely important that we had people here at four-thirty in the morning to get ready for the early pur- purge of water usage for sprinklers, and in the evening. And we did the right thing. We did the right thing. And all that would've taken is a simple call out to the office to talk to me, and I could've explained that to you. That's all it would've been.
Yeah, well, that's...
But it was brought up at a council meeting, and I'm sitting home last week sick, and I hear it, and I'm thinking, why didn't he just call and ask me?
This, this is nothing personal, this is about the budget, so, so my...
No, I understand that, but I could've explained it to you, then you could've shared that last week.
Yeah, well, I, okay, so my next question is, well, it wasn't just, um, this past month, but I look back at two previous, previous months, and the wastewater was twenty hours overtime in May.
How much?
And, twenty.
Twenty.
And then in April, there was, uh, thirty-eight hours.
Okay.
So, but then I look at the DPW in April, and wastewater combined, you have ninety-four hours, and in May, you had ninety hours. And I, I could go back months and months and months, and the, and the trend here is, you know, ten hours here...
Well, if you go back months and months during the winter, we're plowing snow.
Twenty hours there, then, then maybe we need to hire another person for you. I mean, I, I guess that's my question, is what is the policy for the wastewater and, and overtime?
Why would we wanna hire another person?
So you can pay retirement to another guy.
All of a sudden, legacy costs.
No, that's, my point is, okay, no, I, you don't have to be, you know, smart here. The point is, we could...
I'm trying to work with you.
I'm talking to Glenn. So, yeah, so what we could do is, once we...
Your lack of understanding is breathtaking.
I, you know what, Glenn, I don't interrupt you.
All right, guys, just ask the question.
Seriously, when you're talking, I never do, but you have to get your, the last word in, apparently, so.
Well, everybody does.
So, so, what we could do is, once we fix the MERS, then we could look at it and say, okay, this person we're gonna bring on is not going to be, uh, have the liability costs, they can be into the 401K-style plan, and then we can start seriously looking at them at the overtime. Because right now, the, right now, it's just, it's, it's a lot of overtime. And I don't think there's even a policy in place. I mean, you, I know you approve it, but it's, again, it comes back to what policy do we have in place? Do we have one that spells out exactly how overtime is approved?
Yeah, we do, but...
Okay, then what is the...
Let me talk a little bit about overtime.
Okay. Well, can you answer my question first, please? Is it in...
Do I have a policy in place?
Yes.
Yeah, we did have discussions all the time. I have people on call, and so when the police call and say there is a sewer backup, uh, at such-and-such number on Whipple Street, we certainly don't say, well, we'll come in and check it tomorrow.
No, of course not, I'm just wondering...
But what do we do? We come in right then and there, and that's two people right off the bat.
Mm-hmm.
Two people. You do not have one person coming in, operating a heavy-duty, uh, truck like that alone, okay?
Mm-hmm.
So right there, you got it, and now all of a sudden, if you do have a sewer backup, what if we have, um, any number of trees? You brought up at the last meeting about the curious bill about the resident fence being smashed. That was a call-in during the power, that power outage, the windstorm, that a gigantic branch fell off a tree, blew off a tree, and busted that guy's fence down. We come in when stuff like that happens, right then.
I know, I know what, I know what the police do. I'm, I'm asking about the policy, though.
We have an extremely responsive community, uh, workforce to this community, you know?
I, I'm not doubting what they do, the hard work.
I know you're not. I'm just speaking to how we do it, Joe, that's all.
Okay, so, but do we have a policy in place that shows, other than, okay, we got an emergency? I mean, do you, is there anything spelled out in the handbook when it comes to overtime? Because it speaks, again, to, to the billing policy that I was getting at before.
Clarify that, 'cause I'm not sure what the question is either.
Is there, is there anything?
Let me, let me see my, maybe. So, I think I stated at the last meeting somewhere in there during all that, that water, we have our own water. We have our own sewage, we can't call Detroit. We can't call somebody, yes, exactly, Orfland, you know, or whatever. And if, if something really goes bad, overtime or no overtime, somebody's fixing it, I guess, you know? And, and coming from the engineering side, I know you're in purchasing, we've had this argument in the, in the, in the engineering purchasing world together, all of it, not your company and my company, but we all deal with it. When you have holes you gotta go into, you can't just send one guy down, you have to have people observing, you have to have people with the safety harnesses, you have to have people there, and they don't do anything but watch to make sure the hole don't cave in on somebody. But if they're out there for eight hours, that's sixteen hours of overtime, and it goes fast. But it's a safety, it's a safety issue, but it's because we're taking care of our own water and taking care of our own sewage, and we, we don't know when those things are gonna break, or plug up, or go bad. I wish we did. Nobody has that magic ball, but when they do, we have to be Johnny-on-the-spot, so to speak, you know, to get out there and fix that. And when a big giant limb comes down and takes down, you know, somebody's fence or, or wires in that area, and, and we do have to address that with our own DPW guys and everything, too. I mean, there's, those are things I know, I don't know how you can put those in a policy, because those are things that are gonna come up. I get your question.
Yep. Yeah, well, and what I'm speaking of is, is a trend. I mean, you look at the police, and I know there's certain contracts related, but a hundred-and-seventy-eight hours overtime, you know, and, and I can go month by month, and I'll show you exactly how much overtime there is, and the point is that, yes, I understand emergencies happen, and I understand you have to employ people, everybody gets that, but right now, it seems, my personal opinion, my, personally, I feel that it's kind of a cart-blanc approach. There's, it's a blank check. I, I mean, it's, there's, there needs to be some more accountability. I will remind that we just passed the largest tax increase in nearly two decades. So, if I'm gonna be looking at this budget, I'm gonna start asking questions about the overtime. That's, and it's not meant to be anybody picking at anybody, but again, it goes...
Don't think it that way, I'm just responding back.
Okay, all right. So, I guess my question then, on that point, is do we know how much overtime we have so far this month, and where we're at with it?
Well, I don't have it right off the top of my head, but yes, we do.
Okay. So, I would like, going forward, for us to have some sort of a conscious effort to reduce the overtime, if all possible, because ultimately, the taxpayers are paying for it, and they're paying a premium, so that was my whole point.
Could I ask a couple of questions? Do you have a, a sense of what the percentage of elective overtime your guys do?
When you say elective, meaning?
You do it because guys are available, you can just do overtime? I mean, most of your stuff is driven by emergency circumstances, correct? Okay.
So if you wanted to do it in a percentage, I would say less than five percent.
Yeah, that's kinda what I figured.
Yeah.
Yep.
The, um, the rate increase, the millage rate increase that was spoken to, I, and you had made mention of that a couple of meetings ago, too, Joe, the largest tax increase in almost two decades. Do you, could you tell me what your tax increase was this year?
I don't know exactly the dollar amount, I, I'm not gonna disclose how much I pay in taxes.
Oh, well, I, I do know the dollar amount.
Well, so do I.
It was twenty-nine dollars. My tax increase differential from two thousand and sixteen to two thousand and seventeen was thirty-one dollars. Are you apoplectic by twenty-nine dollars?
I talk about the residents that were here from, from Carriage Trays, from Colonial Acres, that were upset to see this tax increase, so I can only speak to them. I can't speak to how much you pay in your taxes.
Well, okay, I'm thinking Colonial Acres, chances are, the, the value of their, their SEVs are, are lower than yours and mine. So chances are, their increase is going to be less than twenty-nine dollars.
You can try and justify your tax increase as much as you want to, Glenn, but you know what?
The tax increase was not less than twenty-nine dollars?
I think the residents are smart enough to know, to see through that, okay?
Okay, there.
Mr. Coleman, there, there you go, there's one example.
Do you have a sense of what it was?
It was sixty-four dollars.
Sixty-four dollars?
Sixty-four.
Oh, fifty-four dollars? I'm gonna look into that. I, I'd like to know what the difference was between what your tax increase was and what mine was.
You know, anything to justify your vote, Glenn, I'm sure you would like information.
Well, I can guarantee you...
Oh, it's a good question.
No, it's, it's, that's all it is, is...
I can guarantee you that, across the board, most people play, paid a marginal difference. I mean, I'm not suggesting that we should be looking to tax increases, but the way you characterize that tax increase as some just overwhelming heinous amount is really misrepresentative of what took place.
No.
We kept it pared down to the exact amount that we had to have to be able to accomplish what this year's forecasted costs would be.
No, you can justify it however you want.
All right, so one thing I wanna, I wanna say something about the...
Twenty-nine dollars, Joe.
It's not that, it's more than that.
I, here it is.
Now, listen, guys.
No, there it is.
I don't wanna know your personal details.
That's your two years. That was printed from the city, buddy, not from me.
I don't trust your, your, your information, really.
Listen, guys, listen.
I don't know, I, after the last fiasco...
All right, so listen here.
I don't know if that's even real, but what's a...
The budget, everybody...
As a matter of fact, Lisa printed this for me, so...
Okay, now, listen. I've all, we've all, none of us, none of us, sitting here, past and present, future, want to increase taxes. We don't, none of us want that. But, and, we have to be real, man. You know, I mean, you take a look what's going on in the economy, as Maggie's alluded to in the past many times, it's not all perfect, there's a lot of smoke and mirrors going on, and we have costs that are escalating ridiculously that we have no control over. And in order to keep up the services that we want to provide our residents, there's going to be a necessary factor in there at times where we're going to have to raise. There was a lot of factors that came into play, I'm not gonna bring all this stuff, I'll be here till midnight again, about why we got to the point where taxes weren't raised and who knows what went on, because there was a lot of shenanigans going on for a while with the group, as far as I'm concerned. And, but the economy then went, took a dip. So when the economy took a dip, the city tried, from what I saw, I wasn't part of it at that time, but from what I saw, was trying to keep people working, trying to keep the residents happy, without raising taxes and raising rates, and doing, doing something that was going to be very, very positive, proactive, and, um, respectable in my mind. You can only go so far doing that, eventually, you do have to pay something. So, we fought like an MMA fight in here, four times, five times with each other, trying to pare down the numbers. Um, it wasn't a perfect storm, I mean, there's still a lot of questions and still a lot of issues that have arisen, that we understand now that have come in up, that have come up, that none of us really had a handle on, until we all started talking about it much more with each other. Did we need to? Probably not, we could've been informed, I think, much better, which might've, might've helped all of us have a little more respectable, uh, conversation with each other, as we related to our department heads and everybody. But in reality, somewhere down the line, eventually, you have to pay some taxes, we can't just live free. And it's scary. You know, there's a lot of cities all over this state, all over this country, that are having to merge services and do all kinds of things to try to alleviate their costs, and you're just getting to a point where it's becoming very, very difficult to manipulate those numbers, as we saw, trying to get some kind of savings out of it for our residents. We tried very, very hard. Yeah, we did increase it. You also were part of the council for six years prior to that, just like everybody else.
Yes, I've been voting against the budget.
Okay, duly noted, duly noted. But you can see, it hasn't been an easy thing to get to.
John, we started that two-mill increase, and if that, if Maggie and I, quite frankly, weren't pushing this, it would've been, it would've been rubber stamped, just like always.
It would not have been rubber stamped. See, if you guys would talk to us, which you refuse to do...
Knock that off, John.
No, 'cause it's the truth.
John, knock it off.
It's, no.
So we started at one point...
It's the truth.
One-point-four-mill increase.
The public needs to understand that there's people here that do, refuses to work with the other council members.
Within two hours, that one-point-four-mill increase cut in half to point-zero-seven increase, or point-seven increase. So how is it that in two hours, we can find enough money to cut the, the millage, the tax increase in half? If we would've spent...
I agree.
If we would've spent another three hours, which I suggested, I, but, you know, people in here wanted to...
No, it's not the three hours before, we should've been spending three months before that one to be able to identify these problems.
You can look back to justify your tax increase and voting for it all you want.
You guys are agreeing here.
But, the point is...
You can't even see the agreement. You guys are agreeing right there.
Well, we got blindsided. Nobody, not a one of us on this council knew that we were gonna end up taking a bath like that. We, we kind of assumed that all the, the business part of it was being handled. That didn't happen. So we ended up being surprised by finding out that we've gotta come up with some dough that we didn't have readily available without getting into fund balance. So there was some decisions to be made. This year, we're in front of the curve, so we can end up addressing what's going to be coming up come next year. That's how, that's how that gets handled.
Whatever makes you sleep at night, that's fine for sharing out loud.
Well, I, I would disagree with that.
You're not gonna pass the buck off...
There's a surprise.
You're not going to, uh, pass the buck off to somebody. It's your responsibility to follow that budget, to go through it line by line, and if you don't understand it, if you don't have an agreement with it, then you don't vote for it. But to pass it off and blame somebody else because the budget wasn't prepared, or it wasn't the way you wanted it, um, I, I think that's, uh, disingenuous.
Okay, everybody's points are duly noted, we're moving on.
Okay.
Downtown, something much nicer. Bob, nice report, by the way.
Yeah, I don't expect you to really have many questions, is there a lot there? Next council meeting, I'd be glad to answer the questions, or anytime you'd like to call me, or whatever. Um, the report obviously just covers the first year, um, of the new economic development DDA direction. Um, so it's really a lot, some of those things you've seen in the past, um, it's just a compilation of everything this past year. The only other thing I have, really, is the South Lion Hotel update. Um, exterior concrete is going in, uh, possibly all of the remaining exterior concrete could go in this week. Um, so that's exciting. Uh, right now, they're talking about, really, Labor Day, they're being realistic, I think. I don't know how realistic that is.
It's getting closer to reality, though.
Drywall now is going up in the interior walls, it's exciting, there's a lot going on. They got over that three-week delay with the plumbing problem, but, so it's exciting. They're moving, at times, there are twenty or thirty people in there like ants. They're really moving hard to move it forward. And so we certainly hope it'll be open Labor Day, if not, by Pumpkin Fest.
I had a chance to walk in there, I, I pulled up and saw Chris Baker and Cory and the whole group. And I had a chance to go in there and just walk through with those guys, and they gave me a little quick look of everything, and then there was a lot of people doing a lot of work, and it's pretty impressive, where they, where they were, you know, like a month or so ago, to where they are right now. So I know Labor Day is kind of a shot in the dark, hopefully, you know, but, you know, stranger things have happened.
It'll be soon.
Getting everything behind all those wall surfaces, I mean, they can really smoke once they start throwing board up, so...
There will be two items on the next council agenda. Uh, one is the, um, resolution to move the no-turn signage forward. Um, I'm gonna get with Lloyd to review all the paperwork we have to date, prepare a sample resolution, work with Lloyd on that, get it to the city manager, so it will be on the next council meeting, so we can stay on the timeframe.
Are we still gonna have to pay eight thousand dollars for...
It's six thousand.
Six thousand?
Yes, it appears we will.
Did you get any estimates on those arms?
Uh, they are reluctant to do the arms. Um, he did not give me the estimate. He's kinda refusing to do it, because they would have to, they do not wanna put an arm on just the two kitty-corner poles. There are only two major poles, the other two corners don't have them. It would be big bucks to put two new large poles. Uh, they wanna delay the arms until the future, when all the, uh, signalization is updated at some point in the future, when there would be four poles at that intersection.
It's gonna be a forest of signs down there, but it's still getting those turns off downtown, turns off downtown. That'll be helpful.
So, that's all I have. That's our questions.
I have a couple of comments. So, we, a couple of meetings ago, there was some mention of, not every business is going to make it. You know, it's just kind of the nature of the beast, especially once new businesses come in. I mean, Salvation Army is coming in, so who knows, you know, what businesses may be impacted by that. But, for example, I want to talk specifically about the Mercantile quilt shop. And, I know, I know they're retiring, so that's not due to anything on their own fault. I did read that there's a wine bar coming in.
Right.
It works.
They're negotiating. I can tell you, I can't tell you who it is, but I can tell you that they're-
Well, the paper's already reported.
Yeah, paper's cut it out.
So-
Yeah, I mean, it said a wine bar, it didn't say what wine bar. Because, we've had three different wine bars want to be here. This group is very capable. And, from what I've heard from the property owners, all their paperwork hasn't been signed completely, but they will be the new property owners, as was noted in the article.
Because, I guess my comment is, one of the things that we, we need to do, is we need to draw people in, obviously, I'm stating the obvious now, people in from other communities. I, I mean, in fact, I was speaking about the Cruisin', and I was talking to a gentleman. He lives in Stonely, I believe. And, he says, you know, I just don't, there's nothing for me to come down here besides a car show. Unfortunately, I mean, that's just how he feels. So, things like a wine bar would actually bring, not only cater to our residents, but to residents in Green Oak, and Salem, and Lion Township. And, I think that's exactly what we need. And, if anything, it kind of speaks to what I think where we've been going the last couple of years with the, since John was elected, and, you know, since, since Mary, myself, I was re-elected, and Maggie was on here, since we put this new council in board, is, is really moving these kind of areas forward. And, these kind of exciting, because six years ago, when I was first on here, we never had talks like this. I mean, that I knew of. So, it's exciting time to live in South Lion, and, and I think we've been doing a lot of good, John, so, we're going in the right way. And, Bob, thanks for steering the ship on that.
Thank you. One thing I want to say about the downtown is, is that, I mean, I'm partial, because I live downtown. Glenn lives downtown. Mary bought a house downtown. And, there's been comments from a lot of, I mean, people in South Lion say a lot of stuff sometimes, you know, and, and you got to take a grain with the south a little bit and understand where the, where it's coming from. You give them respect, listen to what they have to say. But, in reality, the downtown has, has a pretty good offer right now for quite a few people. Doesn't meet everybody's needs. I would love to have the wine bars there. I think it definitely helps, bring people in. But, as for safety concerns, and that people have addressed in the past, I, I live right downtown, and I, I think it's been very, very safe. I think there's maybe been two accidents in twenty-seven years in my intersection. That's a pretty good, that's pretty good odds, I think. And, I have had a big issue with the trucks downtown forever. And, I didn't like how it was addressed by people in the past. So, I just felt as though we needed to try to do something. It's not a political ploy on any part. That's my safety concern. They've hit the pole. They've hit the clock. They've gone up the curves. You know, that's a, that's a safe, definite safety issue. It irritates me a little bit when they say, oh, we don't want to do this, we don't do that. Then, they come put signs up, they really say nothing, other than, hey, this is who we are. We're Oakland County Road Commission. Thank you very much. But, how about putting up our signs that we asked for a year ago?
And a big sign.
You know? And, it's safety. It has nothing to do with, hey, look who I am. You know, I mean, it makes no sense. So, you know, I'll keep banging that thing forever. I know you've been trying really hard, and it just seems like they just keep bouncing the ping-pong ball around.
Well, I think we've, we've got a definite target now. Lloyd and I will get the language down, so that your next council meeting, we could get a resolution and start the two-to-three month time period to get it done.
I get up pretty much every Saturday morning. I go to the gym, I come home, and I walk up to the coffee shop. I walk home from the coffee shop. I sit outside. I watch the kids and their families come up there. People are walking up and down, looking at the new stores that have opened up, that have added great venue to the downtown, no pun intended, venue's a great store. Everything seems to be going in the right direction. And, we do have something here for everybody, if people choose to look. You can't listen to what your neighbor's been telling you, who just is cantankerous, maybe. You know, I got people in my family that are like that. We listen, and then we move on. So, you have to trust yourself and go out and take a look. So, I challenge everybody out there. Get out this weekend and go downtown and look and see what's here, because there is a lot more. Joe, you're correct. We need more.
Yeah.
I'm, I want three wine bars.
I mean, I can't tell you-
You know, I, I want more restaurants.
It's not just young professionals, but people, they say, with kids, say, well, we want to have a date night. Where do they go? Unfortunately, they go to Northville. They go to Brighton. And, because you can only go to, you know, the hotel's not here. So, but you can only go to Lake Street Tavern so many times.
They all meet at the garage in Northville on a Friday night sometimes.
That's what I'm saying. So, I mean, a wine bar, you, you know, that, that will start getting people down here. And, it really, Bob, you even said this, it starts with a restaurant. It starts-
Definitely. We're, we're still in play. There's five different sites, which I won't name, but there are five different sites. And, I'm glad to one-on-one privately tell you where we're at. We have said, Ed, in the last month, two different property owners on North Lafayette Street step up, and say they want to talk about attracting a restaurant. These are exciting things. Possibly combining three to five different parcels. And, so, we are very close. There's nothing available right now to house them in, but there are five sites in play to make that happen. And, three restaurateurs that still very much want to be here. Whenever we can make it ready, they're ready.
The thing I'm enjoying is, this is attributed to you and your chutzpah, your connections, and your work in the downtown, like you're blue in the face. I mean, you've been tearing the place up. This is on you. So, I couldn't be, I couldn't be more delighted that that, that you were available and willing to come here, because that was the moment that things changed. Now, we've got a market that can capitalize on what you're bringing downtown. And, it, it isn't a, a sense of the council, and, I mean, we're supportive. Everyone on here is supportive. This is because you've been working magic at downtown, and you have connections with people with wallets, and an interest, and an ability to make stuff happen. And, that's awesome.
Well, people from this community have stepped forward to make connections, give me names to follow through. So, I would want you to read the introduction to the report, because I, 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 I really feel that, yes, I, I am privileged to be here. I thank you for letting me have the chance. But, I'll use every connection I have. I, I-
That's why it's working.
I won't sleep until we get at least two great restaurants here. And, it's going to happen.
You look tired, Bob.
But, I, I'm going to stick with the team thing. Yeah, I love leading the team. I'm glad I can take all my experience, every connection. But, I believe in the team.
We're all supportive, but you're, you're driving the bus. No question about that.
Thank you.
Yes. My comment is, is that council did make a difference. This council sat on its hands for many, many decades, and did nothing in that downtown, made no investment in that downtown. And, it was only until the decision was made, after I got on council, Joe Reesey was, as we know, I came on with, with Joe, is, is to hire an economic development director. And, I've said this before, and I will say it again, is that the city manager cannot manage both the city on a day-to-day operational basis, and be successful at economic development. This is what this council did not get. They did not understand that this was a different skill set that was required for development. So, what, what happened, so let's be clear and not misleading, is that what happened was, the decision was made, finally, finally, after decades, that maybe we ought to try an economic development director, which is how your job got approved.
Yes.
And then, of course, Lynn was the master at this, because she found an absolutely phenomenal individual to carry through on this project. So, I would caution council to not tamper with the formula, to, to keep an economic developer, development director in the budget as line item for administration expenses, and understand that the downtown is a very sensitive, at least at this stage, is a very sensitive sort of thing to be managing. And, you don't want to tamper with the formula. So, I'm just going to say that I will always support your position here with the city, because I understand how necessary and essential it is to getting that downtown taken care of. This council had, five years ago, they could have done the same thing, but they didn't. The difference is, is that this is a proactive individuals that are on here now, that are saying, enough is enough. Get in somebody that's got economic development background. Get them in that downtown. Get them working fifty, sixty hours. Pay them a decent salary, and move on. And, I think that's an objective and a goal that has been met. So, thank you.
And, I, I think that the investors are starting to see that trend.
That's exactly what's happening.
The past two years, that they see a council that wants to update the ordinances, that want to make it business-friendly, that want to update a website. I mean, the simple things that should have been done years ago. And, it's finally, finally getting done. So, sorry to interrupt.
Yeah. I was going to say, and believe me, it, in my everyday activity, it's economic development citywide and the downtown. I'm not just focusing on downtown.
Well, and, and I'm also going to, to make a comment on the necessity and how critical your role is to the downtown. I'm meeting with an investor, and he's going to take a look, and we're going to have a meeting. And, the first question he asked was, does your city have an economic development director? And, and I sat back, and I said, yes, we do. And, I said, he came from Oakland County, and he wasn't familiar with your name, but was pleased to hear that the city had an economic development director. So, he explained to me further why that is important, and you could probably tell me if I'm right or if I'm wrong. When an investor is looking at coming into a city, in the, in the old days, they met with the city manager. And, the city manager, really, at that, in those days, did not necessarily have the forecasting tools, the ability to look and see where new businesses were coming from. City managers were busy managing their cities.
That's right.
They weren't out in the county, making the contacts and doing the networking. So, I think investors have this feeling that if there's an economic development director in the community, their chances of success are going to increase.
Absolutely.
There you go. There it is, right there. Their chances of success are going to increase, because they can work with someone who has specialized skills. And, that's what this council didn't understand. And, frankly, I didn't understand it either, until I met with this developer about six months ago, when he finally pin-holed it and said, this is why you need to keep this person in their job, regardless of whether it's you or somebody else. Hopefully, this council has learned their lesson, that you can't let that downtown fall apart, and you can't expect your city manager to manage both economic development and the city. So, I, I thank that gentleman for his, his wisdom. It's been, am I right or am I wrong?
Absolutely true.
Yeah.
There's a comfort, I think. There are sixty-one communities in Oakland County. There are only about twenty full-time economic development, or communities, about twenty-some communities with full-time economic development. Of the twenty-eight DDAs, there are only about four time, or, excuse me, fourteen, which is half, with a downtown development authority executive director. Businesses know they want to go to a well-managed environment.
There you go, right there.
There's security in coming to a well-managed environment.
I think one thing that's interesting on the downtown development, my take on it, is, you look at some of the old, you look at some of the cities that didn't really have a downtown, and they tried to create a faux downtown, and it hasn't worked. And, it's because a bunch of politicians tried to do it. You know, they didn't understand the demographics. They didn't understand the numbers. They didn't know who was coming from where. And, they tried to put a square peg in a round hole and make it work. And, you can go around all over the place and look at these places where they built these cities, and they, they're, those little fake downtowns aren't doing a very, aren't working very well. Some of them have got a little bit going on, but they're just not doing what they want. But, there's a push now, with the millennials and a little bit of a younger generation, and some of us that have lived downtown, that there's a push to go back to the downtown, the real downtowns. And, you're starting to see that. And, hopefully, South Lion, and with your help, and with everybody on board, it's going to take shape here finally. There's nowhere else for anybody to go for, quite frankly.
It's going to start to solve some budget problems. Let me real quickly tell you that. As we implement the master plan, there are about ten development zones. The first zone alone, if it is, if it is the Jean Carroll Project, of seven million dollars, that's going to put at least a hundred and twenty to two hundred thousand dollars back in on the tax rolls. If, if, if there is a tax abatement, we take half of two-twenty, then that's a hundred and ten going directly to the DDA. But, there are ten other development sites. That'll be more than seven million dollars. We need to look at the DDA, this is a very tiny DDA. We, for the future, we need to share the gain. And, the gain-sharing concept's out of Grand Rapids. The legislature's going to push this. No matter how successful our DDA is, it's so small, there will come a day, very soon, where we will share tremendous gains in tax-driven financing, back to the general fund. We're only two or three years away from that. And, that's going to be a tremendous boost to the whole community. So, the master plan is great timing. Let's build it now.
The master plan and our neighbors' growth, exponential growth, is enormous for us.
So, we're ready. We're rocking and rolling.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
Good, Bob.
Thank you.
Manager's report. Lynn's not here. Got questions? I'd like to see a little bit of information, again, on the Myers, I guess, and whatever. She said something about she was going to get us some information anyway, Lynn did. So, in regards to their questions, and the report that she could get her hands on about the, the percentages of the water, and what you're talking about there. I don't know what the exact-
I know what you're talking about.
Yeah. That's all I got.
I had a question for Lynn.
What we talked about earlier.
Right, exactly.
Yeah.
I was going to ask Lynn, I know she'll watch the tape, if we ever decided with the city if we're going to be paying for, what do they call, lifestyle drugs, Viagra sort of thing? I know that was one of the bills that we had from the city attorney. Do you, so I didn't know if that came to a resolution, if the city's paying for that or not.
Yes, the grievance.
Call her.
I was hoping to ask tonight, but, I'll ask next time.
Okay. Council comments, start with you, Glenn. We always need you to go last, the last couple of times.
Oh, yeah, okay. I'm sorry. I thought you said Harvey. So, okay. I was just kind of curious. This is like fifty-two pages for the statement from Peter's True Value Hardware, with absolutely not one question. Everybody got this ream of paper. That's just not the way to, to deal with this. Phone calls, or an understanding that department heads actually approve what is budgeted, what, what goes into our budget, what goes into our bills. Begging you, just try to use some common sense. I'm really looking forward to this car show on Wednesday. The weather looks as though it's going to be absolutely perfect. So, I'm, I'm hoping like crazy that it does everything I'm hoping for. So, that's all I have.
Oh, yeah. Well, that's a good segue, because one of the reasons why I had to request the bills was, and we have been requesting the bills, is first of all, we weren't giving them on time, from not one in particular department, but they weren't coming. There was a put, there was a fight just to even get bills from Johnson-Rizzotti Law firm. We got them. They were late. Now, we're finally getting, hopefully, that's corrected.
There's never been a fight to provide the bills.
I'm sorry, I have the floor here.
Provided the bills, I will get them to you on time.
Excuse me. Are you going to gavel him? He, he gavelled other people when they interrupted. So, as I was stating-
Well, we're misstating stuff.
Okay, you're going to-
Just finish.
John, you gavel, one of your friends.
I gavelled everybody.
One of your friends are interrupted, you, you know.
I gavelled everybody.
Okay. So, as I was stating, so hopefully, that's been straightened out, where we get the invoices on time. But, one of the things that we have to worry about, and we need to look at these invoices, is because the competitive bid process is so, so important. And, last night, I pointed this out last meeting, where we waived the competitive bid process for the fountain. And, actually, I was going to ask Bob if he had a chance to look at that and see if there was, if you saw my comments about that, there was other companies out there. And, I was just curious if-
I did.
Okay. So, I, I was a little confused, because you said there was no other companies, and I was-
No, I didn't say there were no other companies. I said-
That I could service it.
-comfortable with. And, could I speak to it?
Yeah.
Once again, all you-
Yeah, yeah, certainly.
-would come there, would have loved to have this-
I wanted to talk, yeah, you weren't here last time, and so I'm having a conversation now. So, yep.
There were eight, eight fountain companies in the state of Michigan, Joe.
Yes.
Okay. That sell Aqua Master pumps. The problem with it is, six of the eight only have sales, no sales and service. We did our due diligence. We did our homework. We did that. Only two have sales and service. And, we bought, we went right to the company, and we had their, we asked their opinion, who would you use? We went to the company of Aqua Master, and they made two choices. And, one was called Water Landscapes, that does fountains. But, their main goal is sprinkler systems, in people's fountains.
So, I-
The other one was-
Yeah.
Tri-County Aquatics. And, that's who installed, and when they told us that, that's who installed our pump twenty-two years ago, twenty years ago.
Yep.
And, so, we went right back to them.
Yeah, I mean, I'm-
We felt very, very strong. And, so, you, you know, you asked, was there anybody? No, I said there were other people, but these are the ones that we felt very comfortable with. And, we do our due diligence. I have my guys do this. And, just because you may Google and see names-
Yep.
You can call, look, Google roofing companies, and just because a guy has a hammer and nails it, then make him a top-notch riffer.
Yep. No, I'm, I'm very familiar with the purchasing process. This is, this came from distributor, and you have multiple distributors throughout the country who supply the exact same parts. I mean, it's all, it's just a matter of, if you buy it from supplier A or supplier B. Now, I, I would understand why you want to feel more comfortable if somebody you've done business with twenty-two years ago, especially when you already gave a PO. So, I mean, that, that makes sense. But, my point was, there was other companies. And, when, when I asked about, and it's not about you, it's about the process, okay? So, so I just want to make sure that we're not waiving competitive bid processes, when, when there are other, when I don't see competitive bids, and then here I find over twenty companies within Indiana, Ohio, Michigan radius. And, it's not an attack on you.
Let me tell you, so, we bought from a company that's about thirty miles from our store right here. right here, our, our front door.
Okay.
Which we felt was very strong too, that we can drive to Sterling Heights and get parts.
Shelby Township, I think it was.
Shelby Township, I'm sorry.
That's right.
Started with an L.
Well, there's also one at Waterford.
And, and that's the other one I just said. That's the other one I just said.
Yep. Well, I mean, they.
Those two were the only ones that had sales and service.
Okay.
The other ones, when we checked, they would take our product and send off to Indiana, Illinois, whatever.
Okay.
And so we made our choice on our due diligence and, and you hire department heads to do.
Yeah, I, I understand the city charter and the delation of duties. But my, my point is that if we're going to, it'd be nice to see competitive bids. Again, my statement, I'm going to stand by that. And before we waive the competitive bid process, I would like to see the benefits, the cost. Okay, how much does this one cost? And yeah, there, there's, that's what it comes down to me, is ultimately cost. And like I said, we had the largest tax increase in two decades, so I'm going to be questioning overtime, I'm going to be questioning attorney invoices, I'm going to be questioning bills, waiving competitive bid processes, legacy costs, and I'm not going to make any apologies for it, so.
Well, I'm not asking you to, I just want you to be, understand, in the world of water and wastewater, when I go to buy a pump or a motor or different parts at the wastewater plant, there's not multiple companies. There's one.
Okay. Oh, I found multiple, but that's okay.
Okay.
So, my next comment was regarding the South Lion Herald article. There were some comments about babysitting and the council being disjointed. And I just want to say that the ci, our city, what makes our city so great is the city employees. Not only the city employees, but the residents of our city. And it's really those two people that make our city, our city so great. It's not the, it's not the city council members that make our city great. It's the city employees and the city residents that make our, our city great. And I just want to state that if there's some disjoint in this, that's just a reflection of the people who are working hard up here in council and trying to get things done. So I just wanted to give a quick plug that there will be an election this November and the residents, they've, they've demanded change. The last election, they voted in three new council members and, no, I'm sorry, two new couns, yeah, three new, including John, three new council members, and I was retained.
You were the fourth.
I was retained. And, you know, I think they're going to be looking for the, for the same. So with that being said, I just want to let you know, the public know that there will be new council members, you will have an opportunity to have your voice heard, just like you did two years ago. And that will fix the issues. And then instead of having just good residents and good city employees, we'll also have a good city council. So that'll, that'll fix itself. Next, I want to be on a little more positive note. There is a trend going around where people are painting rocks with very nice designs on them and they're leaving them around the, the community. And it's, it's, it's great. It's all over Facebook, it's, it's the latest trend. And it's, it's just, as I was speaking before to, to the character of our community, it speaks to the values and excitement of, of the children and, and the parents to really make our community nice. And, and so what they're doing is they're painting the rocks, they're leaving them in McCatty Park, they're leaving them in, outside the library, all over the place. And, and I know the DPW workers are finding them and residents are finding them, and they're even in Lion Township, people are spotting them over in Kroger and in subdivisions. So that's a really good thing, and I just wanted to get the word out about that. Also, I had a chance to visit the new Mediterranean restaurant twice. When I went in there, there was a line out the door and Sonny told me that he already has a review of, John, maybe you heard this, you look like shaking your head, maybe Todd.
Food's been good.
Yeah. So I don't know, it's, it's, yeah, it's, it's really good.
He's having a hard time just keeping up.
Yeah.
That's been the biggest issue. Give him some time, I guess, too.
And, but I've only have, uh.
Been great.
Yeah, I only have no complaints, it's, it's only praise. So, wanted to talk about that. And as you, John, as you've mentioned, that beach wrestling tournament is this Friday for the Matt Cats. So if there's any kids that want to, uh, parents that want to put your children and see what wrestling's about, great, up a good opportunity to stop by McCatty Park this Friday around six o'clock, six, seven o'clock. So with that, that's all I had. Thank you.
Lynn, you're done, I'll be.
Okay. Harvey.
I'm just going to say goodnight. It's late enough. I'm not going to beat any dead horses tonight. Thank you.
Maggie.
Oh, thank you. I'm going to beat a dead horse.
Of course.
Uh, this has been an issue that I've been on for about a year and I'm going to address it tonight with some facts and use my council comments section a little bit as a teaching moment. I gave to city council a couple meetings ago, a court case by the name of Graybow versus McComb Township. And this was about a former supervisor of McComb Township that sued the township for violations of the Open Meetings Act. And one of the counts that was in the complaint, it was that the board, I mean, in the township board in McComb, did not take a roll call vote when it voted to convene the closed session. And I have the lawsuit right here, if anybody wants to view it after the meeting. So I just want to remind council that the Open Meetings Act clearly says that a roll call vote of members and the purpose or purposes for calling the closed session shall be entered into the minutes of the meeting at which the vote is taken. I then went to Robert's Rules of Order and looked at what does a roll call vote mean? Robert's Rule says a roll call is an alphabetical order, except that the presiding officer's name is called last, only when his vote will affect the result. And I actually learned a couple things about roll call votes. It is too late after one person has answered to the roll call to renew the debate. So each member, as his name is called, responds in the affirmative or negative as shown. If he does not wish to vote, he answers present or abstains. I did not know that people could abstain from voting in a roll call for a closed meeting, but that's what Robert's Rule says. Just want to bring that to council's attention. If he is not ready to vote but wishes to be called on again after the roll has been completed, they can just answer pass. Changes of a vote are also permitted at this time before the result is announced. So it's pretty clear from Robert's Rules of Order that it is required that an actual roll count be taken before you go into a closed session. I looked at the minutes of May thirteenth of two thousand thirteen, and I will admit this into the minutes for tonight, and you'll see that a motion was made by Kramer, supported by Waddell, to go into a closed session, and there is no roll call taken at all. I went to February ninth, two thousand fifteen, and took a look at those minutes. Let's see, another motion to enter into executive session, which is not the correct term, it's a closed session. It was a motion made by Kramer, supported by Waddell. Again, there was no roll call vote that was taken at all. Technical violation of the Open Meetings Act. Went to February twenty-fifth, two thousand thirteen. And again, this one was very interesting because there was again, another motion to enter and discuss a legal opinion regarding utilities. There was a motion made, there was no roll call taken. Now, when they went back on record, it said motion to authorize the city manager and city attorney to take action pursuant to the subject of utilities in the closed session. The Open Meetings Act requires you to state what that action was. So you have a second violation in these minutes in that council did not say what the action was that they were supposed to be taking. I looked at February eleventh of two thousand thirteen, and once again, there was a motion to go into a closed session, and the violation is there, there was no roll call that was taken. So when members of council say, like Mr. Kivell, in the minutes, that he has not violated the Open Meetings Act, that would be a misstatement and an untruth. Next, what I would like to do is to also say that please remember the Arts and Cars this Wednesday is going to be downtown. I think everyone's pretty excited about it. I, I think we're all waiting to see the art that's going to come in to support this event. We've had a lot of discussion about it tonight, and I know I'm looking forward to it. Additionally, chief, I know, I should have said this at the last meeting, I just want to say that, I've said this before and I'll say it again, leadership starts at the top. And I want to thank you for doing what you did to bring in those new recruits to the city of South Lion. That's a tough job and that says a lot about your commitment to the city and to actually your profession, that you would be that committed and that passionate about it, that you would bring new individuals into the city. So I want to thank you for that. Also, what I want to do is, I, I just, I, I haven't done this in a while, and I, I want to thank all the seniors in the community. Some people in this community, some, sometimes forget how much the seniors have contributed to the success of South Lion. They have spent countless hours of volunteerism, whether it's at the schools, whether it's in their own community in which they live, whether it's at their church. Everywhere you look, there's always someone, a, a, a senior that is there, that is either working the polls, helping on the commissions. And I just think sometimes we don't thank our seniors enough for what they do. I, I just, I can't thank them enough. Their, their kind acts of thoughtfulness and generosity, I think, I, I would not be opposed to maybe having an award in the next year, Senior of the Year. I'm sure we would get hundreds of applications of people that would like to nominate somebody. And I think the city should begin recognizing our seniors, and I'm going to be a proponent for a Senior of the Year Award, hopefully, next year. So I just want to let the seniors know, I'm listening to you, I'm fighting for you. Please keep up your emails, your phone calls, and thank you for all those notes that you put under my door at the office. When you go to the bank next door, your thoughts, your suggestions and your comments are absolutely wonderful, ladies and gentlemen. So goodnight, everybody. Goodnight. Thank you so much for allowing me to visit with you this evening at the council meeting of the city of South Lion, and have a wonderful week.
Two things. Me first. Joy, alluded to it. This, state it the right way. State it the way, count to five first and say what I need to say the right way. This council needs to understand, everybody needs to understand, people need to understand that all of us serve you. We don't serve each other, and each and every one of us has a responsible position to be respectful and dig, have some dignity involved in what we do. I know we're going to argue that's not the case. There's just so much stuff, for better words, you know? And it makes it very, very difficult to do the job when there's so, I mean, I watch the federal government on TV and it drives me crazy, and I voted for Donald Trump, I'm not afraid to say I did. Sorry, guys. But this whole congressional hearing thing that just continues to go on is, is, has worked its way down into local government as well. And a lot, some of it's necessary, but it takes, it, it goes over so far that it kind of, it kind of masks the good that's going on and it makes it difficult for us to really represent the people in a good way because there's so much distrust with people that's part of the culture these days, I think, from what I'm seeing. I hear it from my dad, who's eighty-six, and I think we could learn a lot from our seniors if we listen. One of them's this guy. It's, it's important for us to understand, we're just a little speck here, man. You're right, a vote, we're gone, absolutely. And the people are going to get represented by who's next. But you got to be careful who, who you decide to put your trust in because it can get bad in a hurry, you know? And we're in a changing time in our life right now where all of us, and some of us in our fifties and sixties, and you're coming up in thirty-four, I don't know how old you are, but you're on your way there too.
One with the gray hair.
And it's a scary time to be living in. My dad says to me every day that people don't understand what it is to be patriotic, people don't understand to shop local, people don't understand how to be dignit with each other and to be, to have some respect for each other. A handshake used to mean something, you trusted the people that were in charge. You know, I mean, he's not talking about me, because he lives in South Redford, he has no way to watch these things, and he doesn't have a computer because he doesn't want one. Because he says it's all that's on there is garbage. And so sometimes he's right. And, but I, I just want whoever runs, whoever gets elected and doesn't get elected, I want everybody to respect everybody and try to get along somehow and stop the personal attacks on each other. And everybody's been guilty of it, some way more and some a little less, but it doesn't help, it doesn't help our situation out. It isn't helping anybody. And when I say it's not about us, never has been, never will be, never was, and it's not going to be, whoever's in charge has to hold the seat with some respect, with some respect. And that means with each other also. And the people that we put our trust in, it's our department heads, you have to give them the opportunity to answer questions, provide the documentation, and if they don't, yeah, bring it up because it should be provided. We should have the information in front of us and prepared properly. And then, because we don't have the opportunity to do the things we need to do on a full-time basis unless you're not doing your regular full-time job somewhere. Now, get away from that. Please come Wednesday to the Arts and Cars. Please come Friday night to the Matt Cats. Come this weekend and shop the downtown.
Concert?
Concert in the park. Who's it, who is it, Bob?
Judy Banker Band, it's going to be an awesome evening. We've got a wonderful family thing going there. Harvey can speak to it, it's pretty awesome.
What time?
Seven, eight-thirty, Friday evening.
So I have to say, lean up to the mic and say that because some, a couple people said, please have Bob lean to the mic and mention it because I can't hear him. And she said it.
It doesn't work.
She said it in a nice way.
It does now.
Oh, good.
Let me do it again.
Yeah.
Friday evening, we have five concerts to go this Friday night, Judy Banker Band, seven o'clock. Please join us. We have a wonderful thing going there, it's a lot of fun.